Okay. Good evening, everyone. I can see myself. Can I have the roll call, please?
Adam, Gannaway, Gibson, Kapler.
Here.
Ormsby.
Here.
Stoltenberg.
Here.
Wendland.
Here. All right, thank you. We had minutes from the meeting of September 15th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the September 15th, 2021 minutes as submitted.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 15th, 2021. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved. Okay, review of commission procedures. We are the Plan and Zone Commission, a recommending body appointed by the mayor and the city council. We are here to look at matters of zoning, land use, and such. I see there's a few folks in the audience tonight, so if you have particular input you'd like to provide on a case, at the respective time, I will acknowledge the podium in the back to my right and to your left, and ask you to please provide your name and your interest in the case. We'd love to hear it, so. Do I have anyone online tonight, listening from staffs? No, okay, good. All right, so that, with that Greg, we will begin.
Mr. Chairman, this is the first of three related cases that we'll be looking at. This is a parcel that was recently conveyed, and we're looking at this initially as a land use amendment, then we will look at a revocation of a planned unit development status on this parcel that's been there since 1973. And then we will look at the rezoning of this parcel. It's located just north and east of the intersection of Forest Grove Drive and Middle Road. The area is split between two different land uses. One is community commercial, which permits the intended designation C-3 general business district zoning. The other portion, urban medium intensity, has to be changed to the community commercial in order to accommodate the C-3 general business district zoning. That's the first case. Go on to the next two. Again, the same parcel area we're discussing. In this instance, this is the prior area and prior project that was proposed in 73. There were 112 areas for what would be mobile homes. There were areas for trailer park as well. Right here, mobile homes up here. Nine-hole golf course. Then you had retail right here. And additional retail, I believe, in this area. The times have changed to a certain degree in that mobile homes have grown out of fashion, not as many people are traveling. You have to remember, this is proposed right before the first energy crisis occurred, so all the Winnebagoes and other RVs that were scheduled to come into these type developments failed to materialize as a result of the increase in the price of fuel. And certain other beggeries did not occur, so this planned unit development, it is shown is something that is no longer in play. And under our ordinance, the city council, after two years of delinquency on falling behind on building processes, has the ability to revoke this PUD. This is 48 years behind in scheduling, so it is
Sorry.
simply expired and pretty much the city council has the ability to change that designation, so what we're looking at is taking this PUD status and throwing it back to what it was originally, which is A1 agricultural urban reserve district. It's from that that we are going to take the PUD area, which is gradually a little bit more, including some right-of-way, and change that so that we are taking it to the C-3 business, general business district designation. And from that, you see the three stages that are required to take this ground and establish it for a potential future retail mixture area with recreational to simulate, to do what was done over here in many regards, to have a recreational and retail area available, so it's mirroring what is already there, and this is something that is common along, of course, anywhere where you have interchanges along Interstate 80. Staff in reviewing the three proposals recommends approval of each one. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you Greg, appreciate it. Mark, anything from staff since publication, and Greg?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to maybe put a little context around what's in front of you today, if it's okay. So, what you have on cases four, five, and six, or 21-088, 21-089, and 21-076, as Mr. Ebbeck pointed out, are three related cases. The first case revolves around the future land use map. And staff contends that an update to the future land use map is needed and is consistent with our goals of the city and would be appropriate. Set that aside for a second. The second case is a revocation of a planned unit development that, as we all chuckled about, never got built. Was cited in 1973. It's 48, and I am also 48. Not gonna happen. Obviously, there's no one petitioning for that project to be built. We would recommend that that be revoked and reverted to an A1 zoning status.
RVs are coming back, though.
They are. Yes, they are. I would prefer they don't come back there.
Yep, I'd agree.
And then thirdly, having updated the future land use map, having revoked the PUD, returning the area to an A1 status, which is what we bring in new ground as we annex into the city. We would ask that you contemplate an A1 to a C3 rezoning. So that's a lot to unpack. If you read your packets ahead of time and you kind of read them in step-by-step, what that would then allow is the proposed development that staff believes is consistent with our comprehensive plan and would be compatible with the other uses that are there. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. All right. Questions from the commission regarding this matter? Or matters?
Mr. Chairman, I have one, Mark, just a clarification. I heard city council mention in here as far as doing away with the PUD. Are they involved in a step in this? Is that before us? Is that after us?
Yes, yep, good question. So every, again, even with the PUD revocation, that is a recommendation. You are a recommending body, so you would make that recommendation. Of course, nothing tonight is final until it is approved by city council.
Okay.
I have a question, just looking at the map in regards to where the property line is. It looks like that top-left quadrant doesn't go all the way to the road like the rest of it does, and I just wondered if it was owned by someone else, or if it's
That's actually
What it's designated?
Owned by the city. So we purchased approximately 10 acres for the future Middle Road interchange reconstruction 2016. So I believe that's why the green actually extends out beyond the property line, is that was the property line at that time.
Okay, so that extra piece of land there is owned by the city?
Owned by the city.
Okay.
Because that will be a future ramp.
They're gonna do away with the loop, right? The loop and it's gonna go away and have a direct, okay.
Thanks, Brent.
Others in the commission? Nope? Anyone in the audience with regard to either one of these three matters? Yeah? All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Well, where would you like to start?
Well, I think we have to start this, there is, we've been notified there's a progression here. We've been they told us several times, so we wouldn't mess it up.
Let's follow it, then.
Let's do that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll prove for approval of case 21-088. Change in the land use amendment, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 21-088. Urban medium intensity to sorry, agriculture, what are we doing? Proposed to Community Development CC.
Medium intensity.
Yeah. Getting the map. All those in favor of that modification, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, same sign. Okay, case 21-088 is recommended for approval pursuant to staff recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 21-089. The revocation of the existing PUD, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 21-089. Revocation of the planned unit development and reversion to A1 agricultural. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Thank you. Case 21-089 is recommended for approval. You're on a roll, Ann.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I will move for approval of case 21-076. The rezoning from A1 to C3, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 21-076 to general, oh, C3 general business district. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Okay, 21-076 is recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendations. Greg?
Our next case is the replat of Tanglefoot Crossing, first edition, to be known as Tanglefoot Crossing, second edition. Located Devil's Glen Road right here. And then you have Tanglefoot Lane right there. It's in the southeast portion of that intersection, and we've already seen a build-out in this area of the multifamily townhouses. This is the initial plat showing the entirety as one lot, and then what we're looking at is seeing that subdivision occur. The density count was met with just this one lot for all of the townhouses that are located here. Requirement is 3,000 square feet of land space for each townhouse. They had 4,800 square feet of land space for each townhouse unit. And this is a better version here, the second addition, showing the property line here. The easements are pretty much staying in places they were prior. We're seeing this divided into two pieces. We also had a letter that was dealing here with a protest. And our chairman has that letter, in case he'd like to read it.
Yeah, thanks.
See, I go to the overhead now, as well. That will show what the area is for parks. In the, in the letter, it was suggested that maybe this could be used for parkland. This is the spot right here where the development's going. You'll notice this pink area right here that I've encircled in green is the service area for Crow Creek Park. And we have over 600 acres of parkland within our city, or I should say 567 acres of land dedicated for park use. Crow Creek Park is the largest at over 100 acres. So that was something I think that we wanted to bring to people's attention about parkland, as you can see this area here, how many different portions of the city are served. And in fact, many people use these parks, even if they're outside the regional areas, as shown on this map, but the letter in question the chairman has.
Yeah, thanks Greg, and I'll read it in just a second, but when I received the letter from Susan Berger, I had asked staff to put this information up, just to give us a perspective, so everybody could see the proximity to the parks and the number of parks, and make sure we had full perspective. One thing I learned as part of this just now is that we have some kind of radius that we look at as area of service for a park. Do you guys know how that's developed, how we determine that? Is it based on park size and radius, but how's that, how's that work?
I don't know. It came out of the park master plan, as the document they're referencing, so it was through whatever methodology those consultants use when they develop that plan, and obviously, a larger park probably has a larger service area. I'm not surprised by that, but other than that, I don't know specifics.
But it could be walkability, accessibility, parking, all kinds of different things, density around it, so, okay. So, this is dated, the letter, October 12th, 21. Dear Mr. Wendland, I'm leaving you this letter and ones to the other members of the Planning Zone Commission on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. I understand that the commission is having a meeting on the 20th, which I would like to attend, but probably will not be able to do to due to a prior commitment. I hope that this letter is read, taken into consideration, and entered into the record of the meeting as public comment input, which is what we're doing. My concern is the plating or replating of the land at the southeast corner of Devil's Glen and Tanglefoot Lane. I believe it belongs to Mr. Dolan, who is completing several new townhomes adjacent to this land, and this is just breaking off this piece from the townhomes. I understand that it is Zone C2, which means it could have, is could, it could have more housing or commercial enterprises. I don't know what Mr. Dolan has in mind, and maybe the zoning board doesn't know either, but I would like to offer my opinion. The area does not need any more housing. The area is too small, and the area already has too many multi-unit buildings with more being built further to the east on Tanglefoot. The area does not need another car wash. Already have three with a fourth planned, nor does it need another food outlet. Already have four with a fifth planned. What I would like to see is green space. A lot of natural vegetation was destroyed in building the townhomes. Put some trees back in there, add bushes, flowering beds, maybe a fountain. Playground equipment, a path to walk on. Children are already living in the townhomes, and more will be coming in the new places being built with no places to go outside. The Y is not outside and not inexpensive, and Crow Creek Park is too far away to tell a child, quote, "Go outside and get some fresh air," unquote. I believe Mr. Dolan has said he will plant trees and maybe other things to the area where he wants to build the cottages by the manor. Why not do the same thing here? Please don't give the, quote, "answer," unquote, that there is not much you can do as it is already zoned. You are the zoning board, you create the zones, and the zones can be changed. Thank you for your time and consideration. Again, enter this into the record. Susan Berger, 3625 Cedarwood Court, Bettendorf, Iowa. Okay, thank you, Susan, for the letter. So just from my perspective, I think staff did address at least one of my concerns in the radius and walking area. I do feel like it is pretty close proximity from Tanglefoot to the park, and there's 10-foot-wide city bike path and/or walking path directly to it with no heavy intersections other than Devil's Glen, which is lighted and striped for pedestrians. Any other comments from staff relative to that? Mark shaking his head. Brent shaking, okay.
The only thing I can add is, one thing to keep in mind that will make it even more accessible, is next year, we will reconstruct Tanglewood from Devil's Glen to the Crow Creek Park entrance, so you would not have to take the path on Devil's Glen all the way up to the park entrance on Devil's Glen. You could shortcut through Tanglewood and have an even quicker route from this development.
Right.
That will include a 10-foot path on the north side of Tanglewood to get to the, the park entrance.
And there will be sidewalk and/or bike path on the west side of this site as well, and is there also on the
Already is.
North side? There already is, right. Okay. All right, so again, I feel like we've addressed that issue, but thank you, Susan, for your input on that case and the commentary. All right. Greg, were you done with your presentation as part of that? Okay, Mark, anything other than what we've already noted from staff?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks. Questions or comments from the commission regarding this case?
I'll admit to having a hard time understanding what we see in the proposed plats and the information we have. What are we talking about with landscaping, trees, things that are gonna be coming in, that are gonna keep the the space, you know, looking kind of grassy and vegetated?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I can answer that question.
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
So at this stage, it's just the replat, so we're only looking at the division of the land, the legal division of the land. We would get a chance, and you will get a chance, for a site plan, a site development plan when the use is brought forward. I would remind the commission that this is consistent with what was originally pitched in the original overall site development plan. You'll remember, this piece was left reserved for future development. And I believe that Mr. Dolan is acting in good faith in subdividing this, and now perhaps either marking it for future development to be sold, or perhaps by himself. That's yet to be determined. But really, just a legal subdivision of land is all that's going on here. You'll get a chance to look at required landscaping and those things when a site development plan is brought forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Other questions or comments from the commission? I would just add one, and I, it's a little anecdotal, but I did provide some documentation. A while back, I sent to you, Mark, and I think maybe to Decker, an article out of the Wall Street Journal that referenced the shortage of housing in many markets, and it rolled all the way up, and we've certainly seen evidence of it here. It said in America Today, there's a shortage of 2.5 million multifamily units. With the indication that if those 2.5 million units were available today, they'd be immediately filled, basically. And I think we've seen in Bettendorf a pretty good example that virtually every multifamily unit that has been built has been filled almost immediately, so I would also beg to differ with the assessment on the letter that we don't need any more housing. I think we probably need a lot more housing based on the way the demand has been utilizing what's been produced by the market, so I would just add that comment as well. Okay? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope? All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve case number 21-074, subject to staff recommendations. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 21-074. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, same sign. Okay. 21-074 is recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendations. Greg?
Mr. Chairman, our next case involves the Pizza Ranch located here, Kimberly Road and Lincoln Road. This is the existing structure. Means of access to come in off of Lincoln, and then also Kimberly here past Upper Iowa University's remote campus. They intend to add an addition. Just to give you an idea of how things are laid out presently, the they're on this lot here, Lot 2, of the Upper Iowa University plat, and there are a number of easements in here. There are cross-parking easements and access easements here, and then also throughout for transportation of vehicles to get through. There are some easements within this area here that will have to be vacated as a result of the addition that is proposed for the building. We've got the original site plan here. This is the area that is going to be built upon. You have some easements right here that are going to have to be removed. There's also the issue here, too, of taking this storm sewer and rerouting it as well in order to accommodate that, and then also the parking that is being missed here. The handicap parking will have to be moved and be compliant with all of the federal, state, and local laws. And you're gonna see also the drive coming down this way, and then the parking being angled within that proposed plan. Landscaping as well will be relocated for the addition. And this will give you an idea of what is being added here. Is this whole area for like a game room? And then the relocation of the storm sewer. Angling again of the parking, which, these will be the two, or three handicapped, or I should say, four handicap spaces that will go in there. And then this will give you an idea of the interior of how they're going to lay the the building out, and this is the fun zone or gaming room area right here. The existing structure is this area that is already right here. So they're going to be adding this addition onto the east side of the structure. These are some elevations here, but the most recent one we have shows this matching up, so that the exterior of the structure addition and existing building will be the same. This gives you a look as if you're looking south right here. And this gives you the look from the south looking north. And this is looking back from the east in viewing this site, and then the landscape plan pretty much just shows what trees or vegetation were going to be moved. Staff in reviewing the proposal would ask, are there any questions? Staff supports the petitioner's request for the building addition to be placed onto the existing Pizza Ranch.
Thank you, Greg. Mark, anything other than what Greg has advised?
Nothing to add on this one.
Okay, thanks. Questions or comments from the commission with regard to this case, please? Do we know where the dumpster is? I was looking in the original site plan, and I'm looking in this one, I don't see it. Where's the dumpster go? Because you got cross-easements with parking and things like that, does anybody know?
If there's someone from the audience, Mr. Chairman, that might be to answer that question, they may be able to help.
Yep.
Hi, my name's Alex Christ. I'm the engineer who worked on the site plan. I can't recall if the dumpster is off the southwest side of the building, or if it's in the parking over to, I think there may be some stalls out to the west.
Do you see that first kind of standalone island to the southwest of the building? See if you can take a stab at it. Uh, next one, sorry. Next one west, that one. It's in, Mr. Chair, it's in that island.
Chris has the aerial up. There's a little grease trail going to it, we can see. There's a trail. Okay, good. And there is a drive-through existing on this location, and nothing's changing with regard to the layout that's gonna reorientate the drive-through or the ability to stack and queue cars?
Nope. The, yeah, the drive-through is over on the west side, and the addition's going on the complete opposite side.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
Other questions or comments from the commission with regard to this case? Nope, all right. Any further comment from the audience? Nope? All right. Come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 21-073, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 21-073. 880 Lincoln Road. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Okay, thank you. 21-073 is recommended for approval.
Mr. Chairman,
Yeah.
Could I ask an ancillary question? It's not really related to this case,
Yeah.
but it is related to this location.
Yeah.
Mark, what would have to happen to that entire site to get rid of the traffic gridlock wagon wheel going nowhere mess that's there?
You mean internally?
Yes, internally.
Well, that would be up to the individual owners if they wanted to reroute, reroute traffic and redesign that. We don't have any, if at all, controls on internal traffic movement. So it's really up to the individual owners. We did look at that a little bit in this, in this development, or this redevelopment of this, of this space. And we felt that the parking arrangement that they came up with was, you know, satisfactory, and they have the cross-easement, but we don't have a lever to pull, if you will, that says you have to redo.
That's exactly what I was, look, there, apparently, there isn't one, or someone would have pulled it by now.
And it's pretty common with large sites, people drive however they want to, so, and they know that they can So, and they know that they can, they can. Brent, engineer.
Exact, same answer, unfortunately.
Is there, is there any one landlord or property owner that controls that internal space? Or is it segmented up into individual lots?
The property line, one of the exhibits that Greg had up there, actually runs to the center of their internal roundabout. So you've got three property owners right there, plus another three or four scattered throughout the development.
There's not much, oh, I see, yeah. There's not much incentive really to.
Not really.
It would be expensive, but it's.
Yeah, I mean, our, our standards really only apply to drive aisle widths, parking stall dimensions, one-way, if it's one-way, certain dimensions like that. You know, the roundabout doesn't really have to meet a true public transportation, roundabout standard.
Okay, I just, it seemed the time to ask. Thank you.
It just seemed like it just appeared there at some point with no.
And I didn't really expect any, a magic answer.
Reason, but yeah, that's a challenging parking lot, for sure. Thank you for that. All right, Greg?
Next two cases involve a building addition onto an existing structure. Gets fire equipment, is requesting that a structure for garage be permitted to be built at this location. It's a C3 General Business District, so the business which sells fire equipment is a permitted use in this district. 23rd Street right here, Grant Street right here. You've got two means of access coming in here. It's essentially lots 1 through 8 in Cole's subdivision. And there's already a means for an entry here. And then there's another one right along here as well for that subdivision and for those lots. And we go to the site plan here. This is the proposed addition area right here, which will effectively seal this area off, traffic negotiation coming through there. Will also be a moving of the handicap parking spot to this location right here. This is the other parking. And since this is a garage, we did not see the need to add any additional parking since this is going to be a garage, a storage area to some extent. And then again, the means of access coming off of 23rd right here and here. And then there's another means of access from Grant at that location as part of the downtown overlay district for this site. And there would be some landscaping required, but not much because it's rather inconsequential. But the downtown master plan overlay district does give this body, the Planning and Zoning Commission, overview of the addition. And one of those requirements, as it was listed in the, the report, you want to make sure that the materials used are not incompatible with the existing building. And in this instance, these materials that are displayed here show you that it will match the exterior of what is already there on-site. So it's really a two-phase proposal. One is 21-072 for the site plan, and the other one is 21-078. And that is for Planning and Zoning Commission to review the materials that are being used on the building. Staff recommends approval for both cases. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Mark, anything in addition to that?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And we do need to take these as two separate items? Okay. All right, questions or comments from the commission regarding these cases? Pretty straightforward. Done? All right. The last guy in the audience, any input on this one? No? Okay, back to the commission.
I move to approve case 21-072, subject to staff approval.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 21-072, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. 21-072 is recommended for approval. We'll take 21-078.
I'll move to approve case 21-078, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 21-078, review of building materials. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. 21-078 is approved, subject to staff recommendations. All right, and I believe that takes us to commission update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder that you have an email. I think many of you responded, reserving 11-4 for some training. It will be virtual training, so you'll need a smart device or a laptop, something like that. That will be in both Planning and Zoning Commission and BOA. So you'll all be in the same virtual room together.
Okay.
And looking forward to some good training with Iowa State University.
All right, good.
Another reminder when it gets closer.
Yeah, you'll get a registration link for an Iowa State class kind of thing. So you'll actually have a registration link you'll have to fill out. They have to track it for their, their grant funding purposes. So I'll be forwarding that to you shortly.
All right.
Is there anything we need to do to prepare from our perspective?
You've got a lot of homework.
There's a test. I would just say, if anybody hasn't done this, the county made us do this. And it's really good training.
Okay, good.
And much appreciated.
Well, that's encouraging. I'm glad that Mark thinks we're tradable.
Well, that's yet to be determined.
Well, they used to bring in sandwiches, but virtually no. So maybe it's not the good training. No, it's worth your time.
Okay, good.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
I appreciate you setting that up, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned.